Kyle, are you on?
I am on. Can you have me in?
All right, thank you. We have a form.
Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Cavani. All right, thank you. Two public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
2.1 is public hearing and second reading of ordinance to adopt City Code Section 4-0203 relating to the process for changing the number and boundaries of wards and precincts.
Thank you. Mr. Gossard, do you have some follow-up on this item?
Yeah, again, this is simply to establish the rule or rules with respect to how you're going to change boundaries as to the publication for the ordinance to change the boundaries. It doesn't change the boundaries, it just creates the process to do so.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing for item 2.1. Anybody here to speak on that item? All right, public hearing period is closed. Open up to counsel, Mr. Weber.
If I may quick, and this confirms our existing process. This isn't a new process.
My understanding is this is what the city has been doing historically.
And there's no opportunity, as a home rule city, we're just confirming our own process. We can't change century code in terms of the timeline for any of this work.
You actually do. Actually, the statutes are, century code is you have to publish four times before you can have a second reading. The Home Rule Charter allows us to modify that.
What I'm getting at is we currently have a deadline. We need to submit all of this work for the redistricting, and it has to be complete by the end of the year. That's according to century code, correct?
It's, I don't know if it's according to century code, I don't know if they're timed, but I know that the county has timelines that they have to comply with, that what we do will affect their work.
And this doesn't really affect any of that anyway?
It doesn't affect that, it doesn't affect that timing at all. All it says is that you're going to have two readings for an ordinance change with respect to when you're doing boundary lines, and then delineates how many times you have to publish that ordinance before your second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Gossard. I'll move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second, a second from Mr. Sandy. The motion was from Mr. Weber, a second from President Sandy. Any further comment on item 2.1? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to three action items.
3.1 Introduce a first reading of ordinance for preliminary approval establishing and designating boundary lines of wards and precincts for elections.
Thank you, Mr. Jonison, if you wanted to start. And then, Ms. Nelson, I know you're on there, I know you're going to talk on the joint powers agreement on the cow, but if we could have you after Mr. Jonison's done, just talk on the county's timeline and what you've got to get done before the end of the year. So we'll start with Mr. Jonison, but be prepared.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I don't have a lot to present to you tonight. I'll briefly just go through some of the maps that we looked at last week, and then, based on your request last week, come up with a fourth option that keeps everyone in their current wards. So just, excuse me, a reminder, the changes in the legislative boundaries are there in the black, gray being the current, our current wards, with the, kind of the ideal number of what we would shoot for within a ward, at that 8453, and the populations currently in the seven wards are listed there. Last week, I presented to you three different options, the first option being the pine option. This one in particular, we had, I think through our discussion, we figured out that Mr. Weber was excluded or was not in his current ward in this map. And it was kind of requested that we maybe look at this option as probably the easiest way to kind of create one option. Option two is the oak option, numbers are there as well. Number three was the birch option, numbers were there as well. So what we did is, we went back this week, we changed this boundary over here just slightly. It added roughly 261, and the population was shifted from four to three, resulting in a variation of the pine option that we called Ponderosa. So this one, we believe, keeps everybody in their, in their current ward, as what was requested last week.
Thank you, Mr. Jonison. And I think it's important to keep in mind, this is just recommendations, anything, this is a recommendation for council, council can change things and take as much time as needed to make decisions, move things around, work through anything, so obviously keep that in mind. Any questions for Mr. Jonison, or is it possible, I haven't actually gotten to hear yet from Ms. Nelson, just to hear on their timeline and what our constraints might be on that, if anyone's okay. Can you just stick by in case there's more questions? Ms. Nelson, are you there?
I am.
Thank you. Could, yeah, just give us an outline of what you need to get done and what your timeline would need to be in order to get this done by the end of the year in a reasonable fashion.
So we have to update every address to be correct legislative district and precinct. So every address in the city that's in a precinct will have to be changed so it's in the correct precinct, so we give the person the correct ballot when they go to vote. And it has to be done by the end of the year. So you do have until the end of the year to get your work done, but I don't, wouldn't have any time to get our work done, changing that street file, so that we can get it all correct. And the state wants it done because people will then be able to go to the Secretary of State's website to see where they vote at. And not where they vote at, but what legislative district they're in, what ward they're in, will all be there for them.
And what kind, I mean, in an ideal world, what, how much time would you need to get that done, and then maybe in a less than ideal world, what kind of timeframe would you need?
Well, I really don't know, because this happens once every 10 years, so 10 years ago, we were doing this, so how long did it take? I'm not sure exactly. We will work as fast and as hard as we possibly can, so if you can give us a little more time to get that done, that would be great. If you can't, you can't. I just hope we can work together and we don't have to spend Christmas Eve here working, and Christmas Day.
Thank you. And I think it's important to keep in mind, the census was delayed with the pandemic, and redistricting has been delayed, so the dominoes kind of fall, starting with the state. So we're left in a tough spot, and so is the county, and it's really neither of our faults, if it's anybody's. All right, with that, I guess I'd open it up to council for consideration, thoughts and suggestions. President Sandy, please.
Mr. Mayor, I think in terms of process, I think probably it would have been, I appreciate that city staff and administration were trying to keep the politics out of this by drawing the ward lines and providing examples for the council. I think that's valuable. However, I think in the future, probably having a half an hour work session or just a discussion with the council to try to understand what council's priorities are would have been helpful. I don't know, and I can't remember what plus or minus number we talked about.
Three.
Three, okay. So I think council might have said, well, maybe we should say five, or we should say one, I don't know. Three is as good a number as any, and I certainly wouldn't have a problem with that. It's just one of those, perhaps it would have been nice to ask that question. Similarly, I think Ms. Doppler, if she has a chance to speak today, I know that there are, is one particular neighborhood that she's concerned that the people on this side of the street are going to be represented by Ward 1, and this side of the street by Ward 2, and they've kind of got a neighborhood association. And I think there's some concern that splitting those up might be an issue for the neighborhood. And that would have been something that we could have brought up prior to tonight that would have been helpful in planning. And so I know it's 10 years from now, and hopefully I'm not on the council then, and so that's just food for thought for the next time around. So thank you for all the hard work on this, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, President Sandy. Ms. Doppler?
Yes, President Sandy did mention that, and it's where it looks like Oxford and Princeton are cut out of the new kind of maps that were put forward for consideration, and it's mainly Oxford Street that still has some of those neighborhood residences on it that I think, and Oxford, and Princeton for that matter, but I think if we made it just to include Oxford into Ward 2, that would keep kind of that neighborhood organization, they're an informal group, but they definitely have a presence within Ward 2, and they certainly are willing to advocate for the entire ward, but organize specifically kind of around their location to the university and their mixed residential experiences. And so I think it would be really important to try, it would be really important to try to keep those together. I don't think that Mr. Wygo would serve them any differently, or give them a lesser amount of service by any means if they were moved into Ward 1, but just in respect of their neighborhood and the culture of that, I would like to keep that together if possible. I know there are concerns that maybe that impacting the population too much for Ward 2, and so what I had been discussing with Mr. Sandy, I had mentioned, you know, if we just included Oxford Street and then we made the cutoff over by Princeton, that would take out those student housing areas, which I would be sad to see the students go for my vote in representing that, but I do think that would maybe help balance the numbers a little bit better at that point. But I am not a GIS expert, and so I would certainly just appreciate any input, I guess, in that concern.
Mr. Jonison?
I think I know the area that we're talking about, I do know that. Let me just switch over here real quick and we'll look at. I believe we're talking this area right up here. And there's some, the issue that we have kind of in this chunk we added over to Ward 1 is, you know, areas of 1,400, 300, I think there's some other larger areas in here too, 311. So there are some, some large blocks in there that are hard to, that are hard to move around. I do know we, we looked at moving this over to Princeton Street, we looked at doing some others, but even one move is, is a, it changes like 400, 500 people in some of those small moves, so it is a highly densely populated area, right in that area. I will say what we looked at with the 3%, why we chose 3%, there's, the research that we found, and Mr. Gossard might have more information on it, is that there are some Supreme Court cases out there that have a threshold of 10%, that's basically plus or minus 5%. So we chose that 6% as, you know, a little bit smaller. I believe that 10% is based on some of the larger political, like senate and congressional districts as well, so I don't know if you have anything further to say on that, Mr. Gossard?
Mr. Gossard, please.
I can speak to that. I did a little research, and the 10% threshold is really a threshold where the US Supreme Court has said if you're within a 10% deviation, it's going to be, there's going to be prima facia that it's valid and may see some equal protection requirements, you know, one person, one vote, everybody's vote has about the same weight. Doesn't have to be mathematically down to the, you know, precisely equal. But once you get a deviation of over 10% with respect to population, now it's up to the governmental body to explain why you got those deviations. So it, the 10% is, it's a magical number, I think, that the governments look at to say, if we're within that 10% threshold, the burden is on somebody trying to challenge the boundary line on an equal protection argument, and it becomes much more problematic in trying to challenge a boundary line change if you're within that 10% deviation.
Thank you, Mr. Gossard.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm...
Mr. Weber, please.
And our 6% is tightening that up, but it's arbitrary, it's our own decision. So if we were to allow the kind of changes being requested here, would that keep us within the 10%?
Councilman Weber, it's hard to say, the 3% is right around 250 people.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's not a lot of people percentage-wise when we add 1 or 2%. It's, you know, less than 100 people.
450 people are going to be out to the 10%.
Most likely, yeah.
I'll quickly add a comment if I may. I never wanted this to be about council members' addresses, and then the current proposal, Ponderosa, is actually based on my address, and I do not feel that we should be making those changes for any, any incumbent's address. However, while I'm the one benefiting from this change and arguing against it, I will say that the work you've done, you and your committee have done, have created a more elegant map than current districts. Even though it drastically changes the character of Ward 3, there's a logic to it that can't be denied, so. And this was a less political process than I think we've used in the past. I would hope that we could consider some proposals for creating an even less politicized process for 2030, as we're going through the current process, but at this point, I'm probably not ready to make a motion, but I see the logic and the elegance in the solution you've come up with.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Mr. Jonison, just back to Ms. Doppler's point, is, does every map have essentially Ward 2 and Ward 1? I'm just looking, are basically the same in every of the, all four options?
Mayor, Ward 1 doesn't change any of the four options. Ward 1 was right-sized due to the district line changes. We tried to right-size it as best we could, and then, for the most part, 2 stays the same in most of them. There are some slight variations, I think it's in maybe pine to oak.
Okay, oak, yeah.
That there's very slight variations of, you know, deciding on taking out some of the Third Street, North Street area, instead of kind of cutting down the university.
Thank you. Do we have Mr. Veen? Not there? I guess, any further comments at this time, or any plan, or what council's wishes be at this point? And Dan, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, if we were able to approve this, at this point, we could still make any changes necessary before the next reading with the public hearing? Is that correct?
Correct. You do need to make a decision, though, as a first reading, as to which of these maps is going to be chosen, so that we can do the publication of that particular map.
So would it make, would it make sense, I guess, and this question would be for council, to maybe move forward with the Ponderosa option and set, you know, maybe a working, if there's, if there's a couple of council members that maybe want to see some tweaking, can get together with Adam on the GIS and see if there's some ways for that to be done between now and two weeks from now, and then bring those suggestions to the next, next reading? Seeing general head shaking, so. Yeah, Mr. Cavani, did you have something to, sir?
Nothing to add, I think that makes sense. I think that, you know, looking at Ms. Doppler's, you know, items and concerns, I think those are really valid, and so I do think that there's a benefit to having the commentary and dialogue. Otherwise, no, good to go.
Mr. Gossard, if we have, for purposes of a work session, does need to be publicly posted, if we've got, let's say, two council members there with Mr. Jonison, what would the process be?
Yeah, I would think it would be a public meeting if you're going to create a, even with two, it could be deemed to be a committee at that point, and that would require some sort of notice, the meeting.
Okay, so I'll, yeah, if council, okay, I'll work with President Sandy and try to line something up, and then we'll talk off and figure out a day that makes sense. Does that work for you, Ms. Doppler?
Yes.
All right. So for clarification, we're not asking for this to be included in the motion, but there's an implicit understanding that we're going to try to work for some sort of working meeting.
Yeah.
Move towards some working meeting. Great, thanks. With that, well, I'd rather not make the motion, if that's all.
I'll make that motion. The only thing that I would add before I make that motion is, I understand what Ms. Doppler's saying, I've got no heartburn either way. If we move a block west, or whatever the case may be, we can, we can work something out. I know Ms. Doppler and I have actually teamed up on a lot of those issues, just because Ward 1 and Ward 2 encompass a large portion of the university, and I think we've gotten a lot of good stuff accomplished over in that area. So I have no issue either way, but I will make a motion that we move forward with Ponderosa, which happened to be one of my favorite restaurants growing up as a kid, so I'll move forward with that motion.
Oh, we have a motion from Mr. Wygo, and apparently by the name it was meant to be. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Cavani. Any further comments this time?
Mayor?
Yeah, oh, Jeannie, yep, Ms. Ma, please.
Could we potentially put it on the website so that people can see it, in case there's public comment that they wanted to give us? Just in case, like, maybe some of us have similar type issues that we're just not noticing as we look at the map, that we'd be concerned about?
Yeah, I think, is that possible, Mr. Jonison?
Ms. Ma, mayor members of the committee, that is actually attached with the agenda item, so it is, it does appear online on the city's website.
Sounds good. I think, Ms. Ma, if we, if we went, you know, further and did maybe a social media post and some more public awareness, and got a high, can we get, you know, fairly high quality so people can zoom in a little bit closer on the streets? Would that be sufficient, as well as being posted on here and letting people know now that we've got it narrowed down roughly to one? Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I think it's just, you know, so that they can see it, so they can see how it affects them, in case, you know, somebody's got an issue with wanting to bring forward, that we can, you know, pose at least to the council.
Sounds good. All right, do we have any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. So council members, just look for an email here coming up shortly, just to figure out who wants to be involved in setting a time up and getting Adam, on Adam's schedule. Thank you. With that, I think my work is done. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. We are adjourned.
I actually kind of like sitting over on this side. You're closer to the action. Thank you, Mayor, for your meeting. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole from Monday, November 8th, 2021, under item 1, called Order 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Wygo?
Here.
Doppler?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Ma?
Here.
Cavani?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Veen? We have a quorum.
Excellent. Under item 2, discussion items, item 2.1, joint powers agreement with Grand Forks County for the 2022 election. Ms. Thorstad, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. As was briefed last Monday, the item before you is the joint powers agreement between the city and the county for the 2022 election. The county commission recently passed the joint powers agreement that's attached to your staff report. You do approve a joint powers agreement each year, but there are a couple changes that are highlighted on the attached agreement for your consideration. The main change is that the city, the commission is proposing a change for the city to delegate its authority to the county to designate polling places. In speaking with the county, this would be consistent with agreements between cities and counties in North Dakota, such as Cass County and the city of Fargo. In turn, then, the county would take on the full cost of the election, whereas in the past, each taxing entity has paid 25%. The main intent of these changes is for efficiencies in the process of managing the election. The county, I should say, the county will also be responsible for naming the election inspectors as part of this agreement. We do have county auditor Debbie Nelson via Zoom in attendance today to add any context or to answer any questions that you may have regarding the county's wishes on this agreement. Debbie, do you have any comments before I open this up to questions that could add context for City Council?
I think we've covered it. I just added that language that, to be consistent with, most counties in the state in North Dakota have the counties selecting the polling sites, so I just wanted it to be consistent. I did take out the fee, and the fee was $80,000, about 25% from each of the city entities, the city, the park, school. But we take on all other costs here at the county, and it's close to $100,000 to do an election. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Anything else, Ms. Thorstad?
No, I would just open it up for questions at this point.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, President Sandy. It's very generous of the county to, to take this on. It feels, no offense, which is what people always say right before they're about to say something offensive, but it feels a bit like the tail wagging the dog here, and I think that the, if anything, the city should be guiding these kinds of electoral decisions, but that's not really the way it's set up in the rest of the state or the century code. It's apparently more consistent for the county to be driving these things. Is that correct, Ms. Thorstad or Ms. Nelson?
Yeah, and you know, at the county, we are responsible for running the election, so it's really difficult, and we are subject to others selecting the place that we're going to conduct the election. The century code does have, it says, the county shall enter into a joint powers agreement with the city, or actually, it's the city shall. But I guess if the city ran their election, then there wouldn't be a joint powers agreement.
One of my concerns for the last many years now has been the elimination of neighborhood polling places, and I understand that this has been driven both by costs and workforce issues. It's been difficult to find workers. Everyone's having a hard time finding workers, so I understand that this is going to affect polling places as well. But my sense is that the, at the county level, there's, it seems there's little interest in even having a debate about this or a discussion about this. I'm hearing a lot about efficiencies, and I'm not opposed to efficiencies, but I don't think that efficiencies should take precedence over ease of voting for the largest number of people. Can you respond to that, Ms. Nelson? Am I misinterpreting something there?
No, I, I just want to run the best election possible. I want to have the most accurate election possible. I think it's, when you have fewer polling places, we are able to be out there helping if there is an issue. And like you said, it is an issue finding workers, and I think everywhere we're seeing that, that it's really difficult to find workers, so I would imagine we're going to have that again in 2022.
You mentioned both accuracy and workforce. I've recognized that workforce was, was an issue here that's been brought up before. Have we had any concerns with accuracy?
If there's questions, it's just difficult for us to, if it's something we have to physically go out to, we have limited staff, so we can't be every place at once. And so if there's... And so if there's problems that we have to go out and check on, we are not available to do that at all the places.
Mr. Weber, if I might interject one quick thought. I think one of the other issues is in the, historically, the county has used the schools, elementary, middle, high schools, as voting locations, and I think in recent history, they've been very apprehensive, if not against the city or the county using the schools. They just don't like having people, for security reasons, they don't like having people wandering in and out of the schools, and in which case, the, it becomes, where else are we going to do it? Certainly, the mall is an option. The Alarissa, I think, has been a good option, and, you know, churches, I think, have been an option, but even some of the churches aren't as excited about it as they used to be. So I'll tell you, I agree with you. I've been a big supporter of everybody voting at the Alarissa, have been, because I think it's convenient and easy for the county. I will agree, it's probably not as convenient for the people downtown, for example, which is why I think we've tried to take steps like opening up busing for free for people. If there are other things we can do, and I think, I think your point is very valid, as we come into our next elections, we should be talking to the county about how they're going to be managing them, and then we can try to react to, what can we do to supplement? Where are, where might we be missing people that would need additional resources to vote? You know, should we open City Hall, things like that? And so I think if we, you know, approve this plan for today, but then, on a case-by-case basis, try to be as open and communicative with the county as we possibly can be, because there have got to be other things that we can do, or, you know, I certainly don't know everything. I think that people at the county don't know everything. We can all learn from one another, and hopefully, we can find ways where we can work together to make voting more, as accessible as possible to people.
But by agreeing to this this evening, we're giving up any leverage that we have in that process, right?
Which does actually kind of lead me to one question. Typically, when you're coming into an agreement like this, if somebody's giving up something, they're getting something in return. The county's not charging us any, anything. What's the benefit to the county?
And Debbie, maybe you want to answer this, but my understanding in speaking with Ms. Nelson is just for the efficiencies that they'll gain in management of the process.
Mr. Weigel, did you have a comment?
I may have missed it in the staff report. Is this a one-year agreement?
Yes, this is for the year 2022.
So if we don't like it in 2022?
We need a new agreement the following year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or anyone online interested? Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, I think, you know, the county being willing to fit the bill and make it as smooth an operation as possible is probably my priority. I think if we're having free bus travel, I just think the idea of having 12 polling sites or 20 polling sites, whatever would be most accessible is just, it's over. I just think we can't do it. I don't think the scale is there, so I'm supportive of this agreement.
Okay, any other, anyone else? Yeah, Ms. Mock?
Sure. I guess I, I mean, personally, I've had good experiences voting at the Alarissa Center. I've gone for early vote, and it's been pretty efficient, and, I mean, even as a voter, not just from the perspective of running the election. I don't know if that's just my experience, or if we've ever heard a great deal of feedback, but I guess, you know, some of those things, I've had pretty good experiences. I haven't had long wait times. I've really timed it at off-peak times, but I do try to go at various times just to get a good perspective. So I guess I haven't really personally found that to be a barrier, but I don't know if we've heard from other folks in the community that have, or I don't know if the county has heard any feedback, if we need to worry about that. I guess from the city perspective, it seems to work pretty well.
President Sandy, council members, this is Debbie. No, I have heard no complaints. Everybody that has talked to me loves it, and I thank you, President Sandy, for your comments. The schools, we're not allowed to use them as polling sites. It's real, we're really limited in as far as where we could have them, and it's really important to be consistent with the voter, because they're going to vote the last place they went. And when they can't vote there, they get upset, and they may come right before the polls close, and they don't have time to get to the correct polling location. So it's really difficult when we're switching polling places.
And I know we open up early voting, perhaps, I mean, are people able to use dial-a-ride as well to, so there, I don't know if there are other options. Perhaps we can give Uber gift certificates for the week before or the early voting option. I don't know. Something that we should continue to discuss as we get into, toward the next election.
And I would agree with Ms. Nelson. We haven't, that I'm aware of, gotten complaints. In fact, we get comments that they do like it at the Alarissa Center, and sometimes, if you have narrowed down to one place, there's less confusion as far as where to go to vote. I think part of what you've done too in the past has helped, besides the early voting, is offered up the public transportation, but also there's a period of time where you can vote absentee and do it right from the comfort of your home.
Any other, yes, Mr. Weigel?
I'll move approval of the agreement with the county.
There's a motion by Weigel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries. Weber, it's sent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 2.2, appeal, thank you, Ms. Nelson, appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, Appeal of Denial of Application for Property Tax Exemption of Remodeling Improvements to Residential Building. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hodak.
Thank you, President Sandy and members of the committee. What we have here is an appeal of a remodel exemption. As a city assessor, I can approve a remodel exemption as long as the application is in our office within 12 months of the beginning of the project. We use the building permit date as the beginning of the project. So as you can see, this remodel exemption, the original permit was taken out in August of 2020. The application was sent to the property owner in February of 2021, and the application was returned to our office on August 24th, 2021, is about three weeks late. So as the assessor, I denied the application because it didn't meet the requirements. The property owner reached out to me, city administration, Mr. Weigel, and we discussed it, and we determined that the 12-month timeline is a city council requirement, it's not a requirement of state law. So we felt it was prudent to bring this appeal to the city council and ask you if you're willing to waive that 12-month requirement. He missed it by three weeks. We've had these, a few of these in the past, nothing this big. This one includes a remodel with an addition, so the exemption is bigger than most, and I think that's why the property owner was interested in an appeal process. So I'm bringing it here to you. I'm asking you to waive the 12 months in this case. What I would recommend moving forward is that we amend the resolution to change the 12 months to 24 months. I think that would make more people eligible, and it would stop this from happening again in the future. So if you approve this tonight, I would bring that forward in a month or so.
Yeah, Mr. Weber?
But all we're being asked to vote on tonight is waiving this specific one.
That's correct.
I'll move approval.
Motion by Weber, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Weigel. Any comments? Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, so I've just got some questions. So in the past, we've declined applications because they were late, is that correct?
It has happened in the past, yes. I would say we might get one a year that this happens to, yes.
So for the folks that, so we declined it, did they appeal, or did we just, they declined it and that was it?
The property owners in the past have never really pushed the issue, because I think the exemptions were smaller. We can't really go back on any either. I looked into that, and I think they've all reached the timeline where they can't even file an abatement on them. So I don't think we can go back, if that's your concern.
Yeah, so I guess my concern is that we're changing the rules and that people that just didn't ask, or maybe the project was smaller, are suffering. And I don't like that there's a benefit for one citizen that can't be attained for another citizen, or for citizens that have asked in the past. Being that the application was three weeks late, I don't think increasing it to 24 months, unless we have proof that, or more data, I should say, that just says that, yeah, there's a lot of them that are almost 14-month range, but three weeks sounds to me like it was just late. So I just think that by approving this, we're then opening ourselves up to anyone that we decline for being late to come back at us, and if we don't have the mechanism to fix that, I mean, me as a taxpayer, I would say, well, it's not my fault you don't have the mechanism to fix that. Like, if you're doing it for somebody else, you need to do it for me. If it's the size of the project, that's not a bad reason for me. If I'm a lower-income person and my project is winged and emphasized, I still would feel the same 100% validity in getting my, you know, tax break. So, yeah, I guess my concern is, how are we going to solve this in the future? And if we're approving this now, how do we address the people that declined in the past?
Miss, thank you, Mr. Cavami, Mr. Weigel?
I think those are really valid concerns, and I think the one thing that I also look at too is, when this project was being done, it's being done during COVID, and I think we all saw lack of materials, lack of everything, trying to find things. Does that impact the application, getting it sent in? I don't know. But I think we've, I think as a council, I think we have to be flexible as well. I like changing it to 24 months. I think that's, I think if our citizens are taking on that project and investing in their property, I think we owe it to them to provide more of a gap, because I know when you undertake some of these projects, that 12 months goes by real quick. I think 12 months goes by even faster when there's a lack of materials and everything else going on, that application might not be your focus at that point, trying to get the project done is. So I like the idea of moving it to 24 months. I think it gives more citizens the opportunity to file that application, get their project completed in a timely manner, and be able to take advantage of that exemption.
I could agree, searching for 24 months makes sense. I guess the only thing I would ask for is just staff, if I could, if we could see a list of folks that missed that window in the last five years, and then with that list, we can decide how everyone will spend that, maybe knowing the request.
Couple of comments.
Yeah, Ms. Hodak.
One thing about this one that was different that I forgot to mention is that they, at the time, I don't think they're still living in this house, they were living somewhere else remodeling this one. They bought this house, they're remodeling it to move into. So this application got sent to this home that they weren't living in. That's part of the reason why the application was delayed. The property owner did mention that, and I forgot to mention it. The other thing is, is, I mean, I can certainly get a list of the properties that have been denied in the last five years. There won't be very many. I got to mention, though, that anything after 2020, there's really nothing we can do, because they've missed, I can't change anything from 2019 and back because they've missed the deadline of the abatement process. So I don't really think there's anything we can do except for 2020 and 2021, and I don't believe we had any in 2020 that were denied. As far as changing the rules of the exemptions, I think we do that all the time. We change Renaissance Zone exemptions, we change the number of years we're going to grant the new business exemption. Those rules change from time to time. This amendment, this resolution has been amended four or five times since it was first written in the 90s. So it's a policy decision, whatever the council wants to, we're fine with. As a department, we like the 24 months, because it's just going to make it easier for us to get people this exemption, and it will allow us to not have to deny in a case like this.
Mr. Hodak, what's the point of having the timeline then?
It's a good question.
Why don't we just give everyone the exemption?
I thought about that, and the idea, the problem I have with, if we eliminate the timeline, when we're behind the abatement system, which is basically a three-year timeline, and that's a formal process, a formal abatement, we would have to bring every application forward as an abatement and have a hearing and...
But we know everyone that's taken out a building permit.
Yeah.
Why don't we just deal the paperwork and put everyone in? We won't miss the deadline.
Well, they have to fill out, I mean, we send...
But why?
Well, that's a good...
Why do they have to fill out the paperwork? We know all the numbers, we can fill it out for them.
I have to look at that, I've never thought of...
If we're going to do it, we should just, but in my opinion, yes, Mr. Gossett, I'm sure legally I'm wrong.
No, I do not believe you're wrong, but the exemption is going to be based upon evaluation, not necessarily what the permit amount is. So there's going to be a, so if you just use the permit for the, and maybe that's not your thought process, is the number in the permit may not be reflective of what the...
Yeah, certainly. I was assuming that our assessing department would deal with the actual value, because that's what they do, right? So... So you're basically suggesting that we would exempt everything that meets the criteria?
I don't see why we wouldn't. The only issues we have are paperwork, or people not getting their mail. We're sending out the letters, we're wasting postage, we're wasting people's time sending out required stuff, for one person to get denied every three years, it makes no sense.
Never been asked.
Make your life easier. All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor, and, yeah, Mr. Cavami, did you have a thought?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. How else do we send a message? We're trying to be business-friendly, let's encourage all those people, for those businesses to invest in the homes. Let's make it easy and just do it, and then eliminate those issues. Even to people that were declined, because we changed this rule now, and we wouldn't have changed this rule had a citizen not reflected that we make an exception or appeal, I, you know, I still feel completely there's nothing that you guys can do. I want to see the names, and I want to think about, well, how can you change the policy to make that right? Or is there even anything to make right? I can go along with this, you know, assuming you get the names, and I support what President Sandy said. I think let's just make it automatic, let's go. So, yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cavami. So we'll let staff work with the city attorney just to make sure that there aren't any issues, and then bring back a recommendation in a month.
Yep.
But in the meantime, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments during that?
Just one comment.
Yes, Mr. Phelan?
You've been around here a little while, Mr. Sandy. I think to Paul's point, you know, we are more aggressive than other communities, so actually, previous city councils have asked our assessing department to send out the letters, and whereas in other cities, I don't even think they even notify anybody, you just got to know what the rules are. So we'd be going one step further from what our city council in the past have asked, is just do it ourselves and go beyond that. So we, city councils have always been more proactive, or wanting us to be more proactive administratively, and make sure people know, and so this is, to me, one more step further.
Yeah, certainly, there was no disparaging anything related to the process. You're following the process that we sacked, Mr. Hodak, in your department, certainly. I just think that personally, we should try to make your life even easier, and if it makes the lives of our citizens easier, it's a win-win. It's the double whammy. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone else for the good of the order? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hodak.
Thank you.
Right now. Item 2.3, 2022 CWG program. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. It is that time of year where I come before you to ask for authorization to start the 2022... 2022 CDBG allocation process. This year, we have a substantial budget at 1.65 million. That is in large part due to the sale proceeds from Corporate Center 2. The program income generated from that is nearly $900,000. So have a nice fat budget this year. In terms of uses, we're recommending 125,000 for administration, same as last year. Bricks and mortar, 1.15 million, so that's substantially more than last year. And then in terms of public service grants or operating funds, we're showing 230,000 of CDBG public service funding. If you notice, last year, under uses, we have operating funds and we combined CDBG public service with community services grants, which is local funding. Using just CDBG this year, or next year actually, we're a little bit higher. And in fact, nothing was budgeted for the community services grant in anticipation of Corporate Center sale generating a large enough CDBG budget that we could kind of save those local funds and cover the same territory just with CDBG funds. Again, 1.65 million is the total budget. HomeSense Rehab Revolving Loan Fund is just shown as an in and out at 125,000 a year and a $20,000 contingency in case I overestimated on what our entitlement direct from HUD will be. When we come back for final action, we might know that actual number, depending on how quickly HUD gets that out to us. But we budgeted for contingency just on the off chance that I was a little bit too high in my guessing. Other items of note, we are looking at replacing our old loan management software from Post Blood Ear with some new software that will allow us to not only do a little bit better job of tracking our loans, but we can also have our CDBG application process online. Community Advisory Committee members will be able to log on to review them. Grant recipients can request reimbursement online and submit their beneficiary data. So assuming the implementation hiccups aren't too bad, this should really be an improvement all the way around. The Community Advisory Committee did meet to review this process and budget and timeline on November 2nd. Those members are listed on the last page of your staff report, as well as our proposed schedule, which has us kicking off the process now. Applicant shop in mid-December, application deadline the end of January, then we'll come back before you in mid-February with the Community Advisory Committee's recommendations. And then final action with a public hearing on March 21st. So with that, certainly happy to stand for any questions, but the request is to authorize us to proceed as I just described.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Richards? Moved by Weigel, second by Weber. Any other comments, Mr. Kavami? Nope, hearing none?
I was trying to sneak a second in there.
Very good, thank you, you're sneaky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you, Ms. Richards. Award bid 2021-30 handheld Raman spectroscopy device. Evening, Chief.
President Sandy, members of the committee, it's a little bit unusual for us to bring something forward prior to bid opening, but we're trying to expedite the process, take delivery of this equipment by the end of the year. We anticipate the cost of the equipment to come in above the $50,000 threshold. It is 100% covered by Homeland Security Funds, there is zero local match. So we open bids on Wednesday afternoon, we anticipate multiple bids, we'll evaluate, come back next week for final approval on our recommendation. We'll update the staff report prior to next week's council meeting.
Move approval. Moved by Weber, third by Kavami. One quick question, is that a purchasing brand new machine?
It is brand new.
And not used, very good, or refurbished, excellent. Hold on, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item 2.5, funding for Project 8265, new stormwater pump station 186 improvements at stormwater pump station 182 and new stormwater forest main along 11th Avenue South. Ms. Grasser?
All right.
I feel like we've spoken about this quite a bit.
We love it, we still like to talk about pump stations by number because we know everybody's got to memorize, right? So a little bit of history in here, the pump stations referenced in the staff report, there is an image of that in your, a little farther on in your reports, you can see the general area, but we've generally referring to this as the Vale Circle, Glen Circle, probably will trigger some memories. It actually is a service area of, you know, almost two square miles totally. But going back to the original trigger here was the 2019 heavy fall rains where we had lots of flooding. Primarily the damage, heavier damages was focused in the Vale Circle, Glen Circle area. And we did hear from residents that, you know, told their tribulations of dealing with that flooding. And as a result, the city council did direct us to make application to FEMA for brick funding as a potential outside source because the study that we did with Webster Foster Weston was rather expensive alternative. So we made that application. If you remember here, about a month ago, we did find out that we weren't successful in that particular application. But as happenstance comes about, FEMA does have another program, potentially even a better program than the first one that we applied to. So this staff report gets us towards that end. What I'd like to do at this point in time, I know you're used to seeing Mark Walker usually talking about this particular project. You may or may not remember, Mark is transitioning kind of rapidly into a retirement mode here. So we have been diligently bringing on another person to help supplement, Mr. Walker. And I'd like to introduce Carmen Severson, who's going to do that. I'm going to give her the opportunity to kind of talk through the, a little more detail of the new program. I kind of dangled the bait out there and she'll talk about more of the details.
Ms. Severson, welcome.
Good evening, nice to be here. So as Al mentioned, Mark applied for the FEMA grant back in last year, October, and we found out in September that we did not get it. Last year's project was about 7.7 million dollars and the funding was set up at 75% federal, 25% local. And then we found out about this FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant. We're still confirming if they're going to do the full funding, but as costs went up in the last year, it's now at 8.8 million. But the good news here is it's still 75% federal, 10% state, and 15% local. So at that point, we're at 1.2 million and we're still confirming on whether or not they'll go up with 1.1 million increase for the costs. So what we need now is a letter of commitment for the local share. The project, as Al mentioned, there's a map in here that there's a new pump station at 11th Avenue and Vale Circle, additional pumps in existing pump station 182, new forest main along 11th Avenue from Columbia to 20th Street, which is a 48 and 36 inch, and then Storm Sewer and Hackey Park. I also just want to mention that the Town Home Association at Vale Circle and Glen Circle has been great to work with as far as aesthetics and providing feedback onto the pump station and generator building. So staff's recommendation is to authorize us to provide the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services with a letter committing to meet the local matching funds required for a hazard mitigation grant for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Moves approval. Third, a second. Second by Weigel. I'm quite certain Mr. Veen would have seconded or even moved if he'd been here. A quick question, do we need to make a determination on how we pay for the local share tonight? Or is that sometime in the future?
That'll be future.
Council President, we will, I think in the staff report, it discusses whether we should special assess it and/or use utility funds, but we thought we could have that conversation later when we get a final notice that we did receive the grant and we can figure out what feels best for the city council.
Yeah, I think it'll depend on how much it is as well.
Yeah.
Certainly, okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you so much. There you go. They clap today, we'll see, we'll see, they're clapping in the future. All right. Typically, Mr. Krinko provides us federal funding requests. Ms. Grasser?
Yes, sir.
Nice to have you on all of the roads programs. Item 2.6, Project 8295, federal funding requests for regional urban roads, urban grant, highway safety improvement, transportation alternatives, and special road fund programs.
All right, we did present this here, Mr. Krinko did a good job presenting it here. I think last go around at the committee, the whole is an informational item. We're bringing it back now as an action item, that's typically what we do, give everybody a chance to kind of think about it and digest. I will note that there is one significant change from what we brought at the committee the whole last time. And that is the 42nd Street grade separated crossing. If you remember, we actually brought that in as a locally funded alternative, trying to handle the contingency if we ended up getting some of the, call it the COVID money back from the state. As the mayor reported at the last council meeting, that doesn't sound like a probable success story at this point for that funding. And I think there was some suggestion that we maybe look at funding that through some, a regional program. And the regional program is a better program for us from the perspective that it, our local cost here would be a 10% on a, under a regional system, which would be what, you know, DeMers Avenue is. So with that, what we did is the tables that you would look at now under the regional program, it does show the grade separation as a 20, I believe 2025 project under the regional. It's still shown as an illustrative project because we know that it doesn't fit the details of the MPO plan and it doesn't fit the typical, our funding processes at this point in time. So what we're doing here is an aggressive step forward on that, both by time, you know, and bringing it all into the regional program. So I just wanted to mention that, there's a couple of projects in here, we're taking kind of an aggressive step forward in identifying projects. Part of that does have to do with potentially positioning ourselves, there's a number, you know, Congress just passed an infrastructure bill, there's still some dollars and programs floating around out there. I think we want to be positioned to be, have our foot forward on those representing as close to shovel ready as we can get. So if that kind of makes sense, without diving into all the details of it, that's what we're doing with this one. Again, it's aggressive step, it's illustrative at this point in time. We would send this all on to the MPO and the exec committee to send on to the state. If funding would become available, then we'd have a potential for funding on this project.
Excellent, comments or questions? Any concerns about the projects selected? Lots of good work. Is the, if we're going to be doing Washington, north from DeMers and south from DeMers, are we including that, the intersection at DeMers within that project, Washington and DeMers?
The...
So the reason, I know the MPO has a grand plan for that intersection. Is that part of what we're trying to plan for there?
We're not redoing that entire intersection, no, because the solution to that is another very, very large separate type of a project.
Very large.
Yes, extremely large.
I'd hate to see us redo part of that intersection and then seven or eight years later, come back and have to tear it all out to redo it.
So the project will, you know, it's going to have to get pretty close to that intersection just to make grades and things work, but it's going to be trying, you know, not to get into the intersection itself. And primarily, it's a matter of just getting the structure, the bridge up there, up to a comfortable level of reliability and life.
Okay. Any other, any questions? We don't have Wi-Fi, so none of us can actually look at the staff report, so, but I looked at it earlier today and everything was good. Anybody have any?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel, third by Kavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, great. Thank you, Ms. Grasser.
It was a very, very good report.
It was, they all, they were right, all of them. They have been for the last few weeks. Item 2.7, final change order for Project 8336 Public Building Concrete Rehab. Ms. Grasser?
Okay, this is, as it says, this is a final change order, this is a project associated with engineering bid, a project that's being managed primarily through the inspections group, as we're working with various building managers, fire, police, you know, other, all of our brothers and sister agencies that might need some work done in a parking lot or driveways and things like that. So this is that project, again, it's one that's fluid because of building managers, you know, we go out and work with them at the time of the actual work and make the final determination of, you know, that curb goes out and that sidewalk stays, that kind of thing. So as a result, we do have, we've had a couple of change orders come through. This is, this will be the final change order for the Public Building Concrete Replacement Program.
Has the work already been done, Mr. Grasser?
Yes, sir.
Great, okay. What if we denied this?
Hmm.
Right, okay. Anyone want to make move? By Weber, second by Weigel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Item 2.8, thank you, Ms. Grasser, Water Department Valve Maintenance Trailer.
President Sandy, members of the committee, I'm here to ask you to approve a 2022 purchase of a valve maintenance trailer. It's for the water department, but we're also going to share it with wastewater, stormwater. It's going to be, all three departments are going to pay for it, all three departments will use it. We have budgeted funds for 2022 to make this purchase. What the trailer actually is, is it's a hydrovac unit with a hydraulic arm on it that will turn the valves. So it kind of takes some of the manual labor out of turning valves. It also gives them a hydrovac unit, which allows you to fix it. So if you get to a valve and you're there to exercise it and it's full of dirt or it's broken, you have to come back later and fix it. This unit allows you to do it all in one, get the work done quicker, more efficiently. We have a lot of valves, 6500 in town, they need to be exercised regularly. And I think this will just speed the process up, allow us to get more done. The more often you exercise the valve, longer it lasts. So we decided that would be a good purchase. Started in on the process of doing research, kind of found out there's only one company that really makes this product that has any sort of a long-term reputation, it's called WACH, they've kind of have their corner on the market, this is what they do. So they came to town in August and demoed the unit for us. Everyone was pleased, everyone liked the unit. The sales rep also mentioned when he was here that they have a used unit, it's the demo unit, the one they use to go around and show cities like us, this unit. It's got very low hours, it's in great condition. They offered to sell us this unit at the end of 2021 at a 15% off market value, market price. I think that's a good value for us. We get an almost like new unit, we save a bunch of money, and we get the unit now with the way the supply chains are and prices increasing, who knows what we'll pay if we try to bid it in 2022. And they really couldn't give me a good idea of when we're actually going to, would get it. So I think it's a benefit, it is used, but like I said, 75 hours on a unit that's going to end up having hopefully thousands of hours on it. So I think it's a value, but if you have any other questions?
Great, any comments or questions? Moved by Kavami, second by Weber. Any other comments?
I also, President Sandy, before...
Yes, sir.
I just want to introduce Dan Hanson, he's our new manager for, in, just like when you see him around, so he's the kind of guy you want to call at midnight if something bad's happening related to water. So I'm worthless, but Dan is really important to have with you. So he's going to be managing the collection systems and underground systems like in water distribution, wastewater collections and stormwater. So he's going to be working with all those underground crews. And they're going to be working with Dan as kind of the manager of doing that, working through Lisa and Melanie. So he's an important part of our team. And so not only is he presenting well tonight, but he's a really key person to get things done on a day-to-day basis for the city of Grand Forks.
I associate Mr. Hanson with the other Mr. Hanson, so every time I see him, I think Mosquito and then I know his name. Any word association? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanson, appreciate it. Last but not least, action items, award bid 2021-27 wastewater collection system at wastewater treatment plant drive replacement. Ms. Parvee, good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm just asking for approval to purchase drives for the wastewater collections department within our lift... department within our lift stations and then at the wastewater treatment plant. We have some aging drives that support the equipment. We're trying to be proactive when we can't necessarily rehab the system or a lift station. Purchasing these drives before they fail just helps reduce callbacks to the stations. We've tried to be proactive and look at the stations that have been over about 15 years old, and we've noticed over time which drives have failed and which ones we can't necessarily repair without replacing. So that's the list we're working off of, and we'll continue to bring that back to you next year as well, until we get most of those drives replaced that we feel are necessary to keep us operating.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Moved by Weigl, second by Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parvi. Under informational only, we have a COVID update with no active links, so there must not be anything exciting in COVID.
President Sandy, members of the committee, we received a message late in the day that there is no update to attach.
Okay. I will call it an unfortunate status quo.
And he will email that out to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Item 4, adjourn, anything else for the good of the order? There's a motion to adjourn by Weber, second by Weigl. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for online, for making time to be in.